Five. Fantastic. This is a mission of the board. This is a mission. How about this is a meeting? Of the Board of Commissioners of Weaver County for a work session on this, the 22nd day of November. It's just after 12:30. Our first item of vision of business will be actually a closed session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of property. Consequently, I'll need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Have a motion and I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll go to closed session. Have a motion in a second to get back to our work meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
I will now move to a procurement ordinance revision. We've got Ricky Hatch, Brandon Quinney, Matt Clemens, and Jason Moore. Christie, if you'd send them in?
Yeah, I got something caught in my.
I thought you were choking.
My goiter.
Yeah, I told Bill, I said, turn around and start on him, would you? He said, we're still breathing a little. I'm normally the one that does that, you know, not you.
So are you both doing the jubilee tomorrow night?
I'm not.
No, you and I are.
We are?
Are we? Scott's not. You and I, Jane and Gloria, and the girls here in the office.
All that does is cost me two grand every time I go.
Tell me about it. Yeah, I. I understand that very well.
Well, so what we'll do, Gage, I told Jane she'll have to meet Gloria or somebody over there because we'll likely come from commissions and walk across the street.
Yeah, we won't be, because it opens at six.
Yeah, we are. We are in commission meeting. Let's start at six.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Depends on how many people are here.
How's it going?
Hi. Before they walked out the door that we want that RFP put out?
Uh huh, that's the way I understood it.
There's the man who's gonna put it out right there. We're looking at it.
Yeah, we're, we got a backlog. We won't be putting the RFPs out for a while.
This is the one on the. Transfer station.
Oh, yeah, that's for the, like a private group.
Private guys, transfer, private guys.
Yeah, we can get that out.
Yeah, we want that out so we got, so we can make a decision first of the year.
Mr. Parker. Hi Scott, how are you?
Did I see, did I see you out the open, away from the office here?
Wow.
Did you?
Didn't I?
I don't know.
Yep. Procurement ordinance. But what are you telling us here?
I don't, I may. I've got a few things to tell you, but I'll try to keep it short.
Yeah, that's a lot of information there.
No, 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 no. Christie, you can unmute Ricky Hatch if you'd like to.
Where's Ricky?
He's online.
He's contaminated. We're not sure if it's COVID or not, so he's.
Will he stay at home? Good idea.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Can I either get you to pass me the keyboard or have you?
Careful, you asked me to pass it to you. Well, how would you like the others to deliver?
Wow, good thing it's a catch.
And this is a sling.
Attaboy. Alright, got them all. Okay, so let's.
Mexican cheese.
You know who used to say that to me all the time? Brianna. You know where she got it from? Probably from you.
Yeah, sorry.
That's alright. Okay, so for the better. I just did it again.
Just saying.
Let's start this conversation and I'll. I'll preface it with, for the better part of probably a year and a half, we've been looking at some updates that we can make to the current procurement ordinance. Because one, it's needed. We've got some old language in there. We've got some stuff in there that didn't necessarily agree with each other. And then there's a couple of big updates that I'm gonna put in front of you guys. That I think just makes sense. And so, if I can find my file on here. Somehow it got stuck in here. There is, no.
You just got Jared's update on the open house sewer. He just emailed it out.
Okay.
Okay, we may have to go without it. Somebody sent it in, you know?
Is that right there, that PDF?
There it is.
Thank you.
Wasn't showing up. Okay. So the way I want to start this conversation is the largest, or the biggest change, I should say, with these 20 key changes is this section right here. And I will explain kind of what the thought process is. It looks like a lot. And I can see Commissioner Jenkins is probably gonna have a couple of things to say about it. And that's fine, that's good. What I do want to say is, is that as a commission, I am not trying to go around or above you guys. You still have all of the authority and all of the approval when it comes to all of the purchases made in the county. It's just getting to that point. So, when it comes to.
So that's, that's what you're adding?
Everything that's in that paragraph is what I'm adding. Yeah.
Those are changed. Zero to 10, it used to be zero to five, right?
Zero to two.
Okay, that was zero to two?
So small purchases used to be zero to $2,000.
And what you're saying right now is with the price of things and labor and everything, zero to is just too small.
It's just too small. So what's happening is departments and the people that work in the given departments are spending so much time trying to get additional quotes on a $2,500 purchase. That by the time they get to that point, they've just wasted a ton of time. Nothing costs that anymore. Now those smaller purchases are like 5,700.
Well, you can still buy a chair for less than 2,500 or are they more?
So.
So everything over 20,000, you have control of, whether you give them the ability to do it or you do it yourself, correct?
Over 10,000. Over 10,000.
Over 10,000.
Yeah. Oh, so yeah, you're there. Actually, I'm probably okay with that, Jason. I like the way you've done that.
Imagine that.
Well, with that said, then I'll let you.
Yeah, don't oversell it, bud.
So I don't know, maybe I give you guys a minute. Maybe I give you a minute to read through it and answer any questions.
Hold on, just to help bait. And so it used to be zero to two, now we're zero to 10. It used to be up to 5,000, wasn't it, the other one?
5,000 would have been before my time, and I don't know why that would have been changed from five to two.
Okay.
But basically, then you had 2,000 to 20,000 required that they received three additional quotes.
Okay.
Or, if it made sense, there have been times that we've put projects that are maybe $15,000 out to bid because we wanted to secure a better price, right? But the, the ordinance didn't say you had to do that. You had to follow that. And then it used to be that anything over $20,000, you were required to go out to bid or RFP. And so now we've raised that number as well, just because the projects that we're doing in the county are, I would say 60 to 70% are over that $20,000 threshold. So we have put some, some things in place to make sure that the procurement ordinance is being followed correctly each and every time. You guys see it all the time, whether it be in commission meeting or whether we're sitting in this room talking about different projects throughout the county. So we're going to continue to police that and make sure everything is done correctly. We just wanted to move around these thresholds because they just didn't seem adequate where they were. And it just really seemed like instead of a speed bump to have people slow down and focus on what they're doing, the task at hand, that it was a wall that they just couldn't get through. And then, per what Commissioner Jenkins has said, one thing that we're seeing now and we have for the last year is that if we don't react on things quickly, we lose and we end up spending more money in the long run because supply.
What bothers me is they end up going around it. They figure ways to go around purchasing. And Jason has demonstrated to us his work while he's been there. He showed us where he saved money, where he's kept the purchases in line and organized and orderly. And this gives him a little more authority, but I'm okay with that. It puts it in the hands of a person we trust.
Is that $20,000? Should it be 25 or 30, or do you feel good at 20?
I'm good at 20.
So Jason, let me ask this. When do you have to come to us for approval bonus?
Well, that was gonna be the next thing that we talked about after any of the questions that come from these 20 updates.
So answer me, so solicitation of quotes, you two, you're gonna have that basically anywhere from 10,000 to 100,000.
Correct.
The way that's written.
Correct.
Does the state require us to have three quotes?
No, the state purchasing code is separate from our code. We can adopt some of the state's purchasing code requirements, but we've decided to.
Okay, so we're not obligated to follow.
We can create our own.
We're not obligated.
Because in today's market, it kind of goes back, you know, these guys are so darn busy, you might just get one quote. And then, then you're dead in the water.
Well, let me tell you what we've found out lately. People get their name on this bid list, purchasing list for the state.
Yeah.
And that's just turned into a list. That's all that's turned into. The pricing there is almost inconsequential anymore.
Correct.
It used to represent something, but now it doesn't. Hell, we can beat their price every time.
So a current.
Well, so when he goes out to buy trucks and stuff like that.
Yeah.
You'd think where the people on the state list are, are buying hundreds of these. Dude, he beats them on two or three trucks all the time, don't you?
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So we've got one right now for the IT cooling system, which is to protect the servers down in the basement.
Right.
We have a state contracted quote of $144,000 to get that all set up and redone. And we're putting it out to bid because we think we can mention her.
Yeah.
So we're always concentrating on that and.
Alright, that makes sense to me.
I was a little surprised when I got here because I worked on that list. That was one of the, well, Kent Bear, you remember him?
Yeah.
And that was, I run all this legislation for years.
Yeah.
And it's a good list. There's nothing wrong with it. If you want to go buy a truck and you want to do it today, it gives you the ability to do it. But if you got 10 days to get a bid, we're better off to get the bid. Jason's beating that thing almost every time.
And I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
I'm good with this.
Okay.
Okay, so now there's 19 other things in this list of some changes we made, which you can look at them and hit me with questions.
Oh, here we go.
You know, it's like, yeah. So this is where Brandon has gone in. A lot of this is where Brandon has got in and just made sure that the verbiage is in alignment from a legal standpoint. And again, we have agreement. In the original purchasing ordinance, you would see the term ordinance, you would see the term procurement, you would see the term purchasing. So he's just made it so if, if we're gonna talk about procurement, it's just procurement. And procurement now replaces purchasing. And if it's an agent, it's an agent. If it's a director, it's a director. If it's the purchasing guy, it's a purchasing guy. But let's make it so it agrees as you follow the entire ordinance. That's some of what Brandon has done with this.
Well, I don't see anywhere there when it says that you take it to the commission for approval.
That's because it has remained the same as far as who takes it to the commission for approval. The contract approval process. So for this one, it's 20,000. 20,000, 0 to 20,000 is for ratification, where the purchasing agent does the purchase and then the commission ratifies it, but after that.
Up to, up to 2,000. Up to 2,000.
Up to 20.
Or up to 20, I'm sorry, up to 20.
Has it always been that?
Yes. As long as I, I remember, yes.
That's just legalese, Gage. Well, if nothing changes, then I'm probably okay with this. Do you guys care?
Well, what, I think it's more than legal. Talk about 16.
Library.
Library director, that's more than legalese. That basically says that Linda doesn't have the ability to do direct purchasing.
No, that says that Linda is no longer the purchasing agent when she wants to be it. I'm still the purchasing agent, so she would still come through me and say.
So what's she doing now?
Um, she hasn't really abused this. We just saw this as it didn't make sense to have it in there.
Okay.
Linda's actually really good. We have a good working relationship.
But Linda buys things all the time on her own.
She, she used to. She's, yeah, she's talking, she's talking to us more about it now.
Yeah.
But the other thing is with Linda is she.
Clears it up.
Yeah, and she does have some, some certain things which you guys know. This is the one that comes up every year where they will front load the system for that $500,000 in library audio visual. And every single commission meeting, it's like, whoa, 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 what are they buying for $500,000? In the procurement ordinance, they're able to buy media, audio visual, books, so forth and so on. That hasn't changed. She can still do all of that. But when it comes to projects or anything else that doesn't fall into those categories, she still ought to go through purchasing.
She's just putting money in the kitty so she can take it out piece by piece.
Correct.
Point is, so Jason is the director of purchasing in the county. And he kind of wants his job. He wants to coordinate this whole thing and do what is we paying to do.
Correct.
Isn't that what he wanted to do?
That kind of makes some sense to me.
And we want it done right.
But I'm looking, I'm looking here.
Back on this?
And you've got right in here, requires at least three bidders. My point is, that could be the roadblock for you or a wall.
Attempts. So we've had situations where we go up, we've reached out to three companies for a quote.
Yeah.
And we've either given them a deadline, you need to respond to us with your quote by whatever date. If they don't respond by that date with a quote, we consider that one of three. Or if they come back and say we're not interested, we, we can also consider that as two of three. So there have been times where we've made attempts to get three quotes and one of them.
Well, only thing I'm worried about here is if somebody disgruntled bidder got, gets a hold of this, and he asks you for three bids, and you, because that's what our policy said, you don't have the three bids to show him. You're, you know, then we're going to our attorney saying, how do we protect ourselves?
With anything that I've done, I'll never get to that point, because if we only have two bids, but we have, I've, I've listed a memo as to why we couldn't get the third one. It's all in the file. I can, I can represent, I can back that up all day long.
Well, you can back it up. I just do not have to, I just do not spend legal time on something we can cure now by saying to, to take from one to three bids.
Does that make sense? If, if it says we have to get three bids, that changes.
What you're saying, this is a shall, not a.
Yeah, may.
This is not a may.
Well, with, with all these shals, there's always exceptions. And, and that's kind of more.
Yeah, but I don't want exceptions, but we've got to go to court to say why the hell we're right.
Yeah, so this one, as far as the language of our new code goes.
You have a good point there.
It says that we shall engage in the procurement through the solicitation to at least three bidders. Or if the acquiring entity is unable to identify at least three bidders, to as many bidders as can be reasonably identified.
So that's safe.
You have to solicit three bidders. And then if you can't get more, or if you can't even get up to three, right then.
Then you're safe.
Sorry, I may not have.
Yeah, that's okay, guys, that's safe. Well, I understand that. That's not what this is. Requires three competitive bidding from at least three bids.
That would need to be modified.
Requires. To me, that says, look, I've got to have, Jason better have three bids in his file, or we're subject to lawsuit.
And that's just, you know, just an error that was made.
Well, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
But I have. Gage is saying, can we reference that across one to the other or?
Okay, so the actual, actual document that'll come before you guys for you to approve will be the purchasing, the procurement ordinance. And, and that language is correct. This was just a cheat sheet so that you guys could see what the top 20 changes.
So don't give this to the public.
No, 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 they won't get it. Sorry. I should have clarified that. This is just for this discussion. And, and that was the other thing is, is this will be followed up with, I will email you guys, or if you want it printed, or you want both, whatever you want. I'll make sure you have a copy of the procurement ordinance. And everything in that, to, to the best of our knowledge, is correct, written correctly.
That's where, that's where we'll look at the shall and the may.
Yeah.
Yes.
Jeez, boy.
I like it. Okay.
That was a great question.
Thank you. What else should we know about this?
I, I put an asterisk on a couple of things. Number 13.
What about number eight?
Oh, who said number eight?
This is for the selection of evaluation.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Number eight requires an evaluation committee, which is now appointed by the purchasing agent. Instead of the commission, establishes qualifying criteria for evaluation and the process for evaluation. The reason we looked at this, and you can back me up here. If the commission is responsible for an RFP, then of course you guys can assign or work with me to assign the committee so that that's done correctly and for that RFP. But I will be working with all of the departments throughout the county. And it doesn't make sense, in my point of view, to reach out to the commission every single time to set up those committees. To be honest, we haven't been doing it all the time anyway, so it just seems like we should change that to more accurate, accurately reflect how it's been being done. So for example, if we do an RFP for security cameras at the new building out of the sheriff's office, unless one of you wants to be involved, we're gonna move through that process, including selecting the evaluation committee. And then you will see the final results, and you will be able to approve or reject it at that point.
I think, I think what I've put on there that you do that in consultation with whoever is over you, whichever commissioner's over you.
In that portfolio.
Yeah, the reason I say that is I didn't like the way you put that evaluation committee away for the DTO group.
Okay.
I thought you missed the mark there a little. Anyway, that's just my opinion.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Whoever's portfolio falls in.
Yeah, but you can simply say, you want to be involved in this, and this is the one we're doing. This is the guys I'm putting over. Just that's.
As a provision in the code, we can choose to put it in here as a requirement of law, or you can do it as a procedure. Just depends on how you want to go about.
Yeah, to me, it's a procedure.
Me too.
If it's more of a practice point, we don't have to put it in.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be an ordinance. I just a procedure.
Whose portfolio is the DTO group in?
All three of us, isn't it?
I thought it was Commissioner Crower.
But where he's under me, I would think he'd come to me, and then he's by me.
Who?
Jason. He's my portfolio.
Under clerk auditor, right? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Oh, under clerk auditor, he's not my portfolio. I thought he's in my, under Sean.
No.
Oh, if you're a clerk auditor, isn't that your portfolio?
It's hard.
Yeah.
He did come to me.
Okay, then you're done?
So, but in this, in this.
Yeah, I remember giving you a hard time about that.
In this instance, I'm coming to you guys based on where the project lies. So if it's the sheriff doing an RFP, I'm making you aware of the RFP and the committee that is being selected. I'm sorry, that's right. It has gone for a while.
Yeah.
Right? And if it's, I mean.
See that now with our wheels, our organizational chart, that all shows there.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I like that idea.
I think it's great.
And if it's a countywide issue, then you come to the.
Yeah, that way we actually.
Well, just spell it out, however you're gonna do it. I don't really care. I just want one of us to take a look at it.
And then we'll follow.
Yeah, just one other should know about it.
That's right. Just that simple.
Number 13. It says consultant selection, remove provisions specifically applicable to consultant selection. Consultant selection will now follow the same procurement ordinances as other procurements.
What does that mean?
That means if the county, a department in the county has a need to hire a consultant, we basically just follow the same procurement process that we would for other things like.
That's how I assumed it was.
Services or products or whatever else. It wasn't written that way.
Okay.
And Brandon caught that and thought it was a good idea.
But Jason, what happens if Ricky Hatch comes to you and says, you know, I need a consultant. Put one out for bid. And we don't agree with that. We don't want anything to do with that. How are you gonna handle that?
I'm gonna talk to you three. Either with or without Ricky.
Right. So we have to approve that.
Yeah, in that situation, going off of what we just said for number eight, I would go to.
Right.
Harvey and say, hey, Ricky wants to put this out.
Yeah.
Just making you aware of it.
That's good. I just want to make sure nobody can do an end run in this whole thing or else.
Yeah, we're trying to prevent the circumvent.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that then.
It's looking better by the minute.
Another asterisk. I think I got one more. Okay, here's one right here that we got to talk about real quick. So it's number nine, and it's C as in cat. So when we're talking about exceptions to the competitive requirement. So there are exceptions sometimes. This happens all the time, right? So emergency procurements, when COVID hit the fan, that was an exception. We were really trying to get gloves and things to sterilize equipment and whatever else. So we were, there were exceptions. There are exceptions when they're under state contract. There are exceptions. There, there's a lot of.
So the way you did it before, you came to us and said, I'm gonna have to go outside of this. We all said, okay, go ahead. And now you just have the ability to do it.
Yeah, we figured with the experience and what's been going on, but now, depending on what it is, it kind of sounds like you guys are gonna be made aware of it anyway. So, but we just think that instead, I don't want to call it wasting your time. I think we're completely capable of handling that and then seeking your additional counsel if and as needed.
That's the way I see it. I like that.
You okay with that, Gage?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just see it the same way.
We're giving you enough rope to hang yourself.
We just, we gotta talk about, as long as whoever's portfolio, you need to run it by Harvard, Jenkins, or my portfolio. Just say, look, this is what we're doing with emergency services. You okay with that? Just, I mean, not even it's okay, just heads up, just so we know about. I'm not asking for approval, but I'd like to be made aware of it.
Absolutely.
And it still has to be in the budget, right?
Yeah, right. Ah, good point.
Yeah.
So we can't get it by you. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you just kind of have to say, well, you gotta do this. You know, we need X million extra gloves or whatever it is. And most of these things already happen because of the munis. This just tightens it up. I'm grateful for what you've got.
I think emergency procurements might change substantially with these new thresholds as well.
Yeah, I could.
I think it's gonna impact the efficiency of.
The efficiency.
I'm good with this.
And that's where it really what it is. It's not, it's streamlining and making more efficient.
Mr. Vice Chair, are you okay with this?
Okay, Mr. Chair.
I'm good with the bar. Yep, there you go.
How much of a presentation do you want in front of the commission meeting to go for the two hearings on this?
The most efficient way you can do it.
Got it.
What's that? To put out the consent?
You can't.
I would like though, hold on. I would like you to, I would like it to be on a, because you've done a lot of work here. And I, this.
You've done a lot of work.
Okay. We've done a lot of work here, but that doesn't, I'd like you to brag a little bit about how, why we're a little better than the, the average 29 counties. I'd like you to brag a little.
Especially Utah County?
This was, that's the Orem pit of the state.
Yeah, especially the state. Honestly, their purchasing code is.
I heard someone say once that if the state, he thought was gonna get an enema, go through Oregon.
Alright.
Oh my gosh.
I'll put something good together. I'll probably wear a sport jacket and the three of you can ask, ask questions.
As long as you're still in.
Whoa.
Cats or your Roger.
We're really getting that, getting that at your level of comfort here.
This is one of the bigger things I've done since I've been.
When are we gonna do this?
Good.
As soon as possible.
I'd like you to do it as soon as possible.
I, I would like this to be in effect at least at the beginning of the year, if not later.
Okay. Well, we don't have a lot of commissioners, mission meetings, we'll get her on there, so.
Okay. Well, you're all aware of it, so we'll get it going, which means we get on the portal and get this pushed through.
Okay, anything else?
Good to know.
Commissioners, I'd like to move on with our agenda. Thank you. Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
We're gonna move on. We're gonna invite Jennifer Graham, Marty Smith, and Mariko Rollins to come in with the Weaver County skating complex, the expansion contract. Christie, please send them in. One of the two of you may want to stay in here.
We're both pretty involved on this one, so.
You know what's going on with us?
Oh, yeah. Do you have a car detail business?
What, a car?
Hey, Marty, how you guys doing?
I'd sure like to hire you. Your car is always perfect.
We're only 28 minutes behind.
That's not too bad.
My back and half.
Sorry about that.
Wow, it's really good. You do it. The detail you use.
Eric Scott Mendoza.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Rollins is right over here.
Oh, really? Tough place to sit, you guys.
All right, you've been busy.
Have a little bit of a thing going on.
Okay, thank you.
Got all the tests. Got nothing.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay, go ahead.
Liam is on his way.
So is Santa Claus. Is he gonna be?
There's three things happening with this Olympic contract. It's possible expansion. And then the legislative asks, so I just want to make clear that there's three different things happening so that as we go through each step of the process, there's not massive confusion, which there will be anyway. The first thing is that purchasing did an RFQ and an RFP for us this year. And we selected a firm, Elliott Work Group, to do the expansion design work. With that contract, they asked us to have DFCM open a project number so that as soon as we receive funds to move forward, it will be managed by DFCM. So we have the agreement with Elliott Work Group. Liam is gonna work on it starting next week. They want to use, I want to use all of the extra money from the $150,000 that legislative gave us. They want to use, I want to use all of the extra money from the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that legislative gave us two years ago. I want to put all that into a capital campaign design so that we can start receiving donations for this building and actually have materials that are ready to go to market to actually say, okay, donors, if you'd like to donate five hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars towards our project, these are the materials that are gonna get us there.
Let me ask you a question. When you say they wanted to be managed by D F C M, who is they? Is that?
D F C M wants to manage.
Yeah, so D F C M, they're telling you they want to manage our project.
Uh, it's our, it's on state property, so they do have to take it over eventually.
That's true.
It's a state property because we were stated.
Yeah.
We don't have a choice.
Okay.
Until we break ground.
I'm fine with that.
Until.
And then I asked if they could not, that they could actually project manage, project manage the whole project.
And they will.
And they're willing to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as you're gonna do it, you might as well do the whole thing.
It'll be the same setup.
That's it.
It'll be the same setup when Todd, as when Todd did the two thousand twelve expansion. So between Weaver State and Weaver County, D F C M will be the project manager and they'll make sure everything is correct.
Yep.
And then they'll take those legislative funds, which is part B, what we're gonna talk about, but they'll take those funds and make sure that they're all accounted for and that everything is appropriated correctly so that it's clean. Um, so my understanding is that Elliot is gonna get me that agreement to Liam. We're gonna sign it in commission meeting and award the RFP to Elliott Work Group. Once that award is given, D F C M will open the project number and they will take it away. We have to do a soil study and then these, um, design materials.
The Olympics didn't take place?
Not for a while.
The, the actual decision, is that what you're asking?
I thought we should know pretty much here the next couple of weeks or months.
Yeah, sometime in December, Salt Lake Organizing Meeting will announce their intent to bid.
Mm-hmm.
And then possibly by March, they said they may know.
So I guess my, not for a while, is late spring.
Yeah, so that's not bad. So, okay, that seems appropriate toward this contract then. Is there a provision in there to cancel it?
Oh, this is for the study.
This is just for the design commissioner, which we were awarded money by the legislature.
We already have the money.
We are signing an agreement with, yeah, D F C M.
I'm fine.
Yeah. But Liam will make sure we're covered. He'll make sure we're covered. And then part B with, um, D F C M and the legislative, legislator was the topic that Jen and Marty brought up with you guys, the matching funds. Do we need to talk about that?
Yeah.
We do need to talk about that.
Uh, well, my question was, as you saw, Commissioner, there's several, uh, venues on there that aren't matching at all. That aren't bringing any matching. And Marico's responsible for that. There's a legacy ones that managed by the Olympic legacy fund.
What reporter, what paper did you see that showed that?
I, I handed those to you in the other day.
Did this come from the Olympic Committee or the state?
The Olympic Committee.
Yeah, based on their.
Yeah, I didn't put that connection together. So these are all legacy projects.
Well, some of the venues are like us and then other ones are those ones, what do you call those? Like the oval that are managed by.
This is just, this is just the committee. This is not the legislature saying.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the document presented to the legislature.
I, I emailed Colin back and I said, you, you got our split wrong. You're asking for six and we're gonna receive six and then we're gonna come up with four. He goes, no, but I have an idea for how to fix it later down the road. And I said, I'm not comfortable with that. We need, like, I need this buttoned up before we sign our Olympic contract.
I don't like trying to fix that down. Who are you talking?
For you, Colin Hilton.
Colin Hilton. So that's where I left it with Colin with the split and he's been silent since.
So.
So I think our question, Marty and I have the question of, is this something you want us to maybe be prepared for, for our legislative breakfast in January? That we, no matter what they ask for, we are thinking maybe if we communicated to our legislators that we want more.
Absolutely. The venues that are a no match are those Olympic legacy managed, uh, venues that are kind of still part of the holdovers from the Olympic. I guess there's funds there. They have, anyway, like the oval.
So this, all, all these funds would be taken care of through I G G, so that's Colomore and, uh, let's see, man, anyway. Uh, so that's, that's who we'd have to have a discussion with, but it wouldn't hurt for our legislators to be aware of it.
Okay. The, the ask is separate from our Olympic agreement. I'm wondering if we should have Liam add something in the Olympic agreement, though, that can tie it back to.
Well, I would just be.
I don't know.
I'd be careful not to sign anything with the Olympic Committee agreeing to anything until we agree to it.
Okay.
So we've worked through an agreement with them, but nothing has been signed.
Okay.
Just to give the verbiage right.
I just don't want anything from the committee to go to I G G saying, look, they've already agreed to four million dollars, six million.
Right.
So.
Well, we'll take ten, so if you can get us ten, Commissioner.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, we're a zero state money, we're a zero input, other than stuff that we can use for maintenance upkeep and general. Well, we, we talked about the money, we were gonna put the money in, uh, for our remodel.
Yeah.
Anything that we would do.
Right. But, so.
Regardless.
We said we're not matching any, what would they do?
Regardless.
I have no idea.
They wouldn't.
Because Provo is also hesitant to sign their agreement as well. They're in the same boat as us. They were promised more of a split.
And what did they do in Provo last time?
They did women's hockey and they'll do that again.
Yeah, because it's early on.
To Marty's point, it's not like we have venues out there that are not committed.
Right.
So they need it one way or another.
And he's changed the plan on this because early on they were gonna pay and then he came back with this fifty-fifty.
Yeah, they, they've got, they're gonna have more money. They know what to do with this year and they can put a lot of that into that big, which is what's gonna happen.
Okay.
So this soldier hollow, this, uh, building right there, isn't that, doesn't, isn't that end up being the clubhouse for the golf course?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. So they're saying no local man because they're, they're a little local man.
They are, yeah.
Exactly.
No, and these are the facilities that Colin himself manages, so I found it.
The head of the Olympic.
Let me get that money right out of the park. See that outfit in this park?
Right, exactly.
That's all they're doing.
That's exactly it.
This is a main switch. I haven't seen it.
And if you remember, Commissioners, Colin says he's talking with, you corrected me, Abby Osborne and John.
Abby Osborne.
And who? John. Yeah, well, that's, okay. That's all fine and good, but Abby doesn't have a vote and.
That's right.
And she's pretty persuasive.
John doesn't have a vote.
But we could just say, look, you want me to call Abby? She, she's one of the Osbornes from the, uh. No, we don't need to call Abby yet. We could.
So Commissioners, are you okay if we get on the legislative breakfast for a three minute?
Donnie Merrill.
Yeah, for the legislative, for what I'm concerned.
Arm, you okay talking about that for three minutes?
And the legislative breakfast?
Please.
Then we want more money.
Would you take care of that?
Yeah.
Okay. It's just been delegates. I don't think we've got anybody sitting on it. We'll find out if anybody's sitting on it. Stephanie, find out if any of our guys are on I G G. Schultz was.
Yeah, it was, but not anymore.
I can't get him to come.
If, you can what?
Guy these days. But Schultz, uh, he could still be on that committee even though he's the majority leader now.
That's, and even now that he's majority leader, he's even more important. Yeah.
So he's been appointed. That's done deal, right?
He voted on two weeks ago.
Yeah, he's, it's a done deal. For him.
Um, I also think it's important that you guys have a chance to brainstorm and come up with the right way you want to move forward with Ogden City. And if you want to ask them to put any money toward this project, I think that that's something you can use to your advantage if you want help paying for it. So I just want to put that on your radar.
I'd love to see him ante up.
I would too, but.
But why would they do that? They have, they've got no vested interest up there. Uh, they're not.
Other than the tourism tax that we, that we bring in.
And we could argue the Texas T R T.
They, they promote the heck. A lot of these people come in for the curling will be T R T that they're gonna get the.
All of our hotels stay.
Tom will tell you, there's really not that big of a contribution.
Just the, just the entire economic impact of that.
Uh, we have made a big push the last two years for, for anyone staying at the ring for a tournament has to stay in Ogden City and Weaver County. So we made that transition for our facility.
That's not, no, I think.
They should.
We need to have that conversation along with about a half a dozen others with Ogden City.
Okay, so if you want to add that to your to-do list with them, I think that's worth having now.
I, I agree.
So, um, and then just one thing, when you see the contract for Elliott in commission, we're gonna do a dollar amount that's higher than what Elliott Work Group said these materials would cost because we're trying to get, infinite scale to put their brains together for these marketing materials. So it's gonna, it's, it's legal. I already asked purchasing about it. Um, but I'm keeping money aside for the soil study. That's gonna be about twenty grand. And then I'm using a hundred thousand dollars instead of sixty-three thousand dollars. So that's the only thing that's gonna be different.
Oh, so basically we'll come up with a whole rendering package that we can, Rico can go raise capital for if you're.
We've got, but we've got that. You're saying taking that out of the hundred and fifty we've got. Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Use it.
Okay. Cool. We're done.
Okay.
You're great.
Good.
Really a good job.
This is good.
Any, for any of the others, you have anything on this?
Yeah, his portfolio is a small one.
Me.
You'll hear a little bit more from us later.
Princeton or Scott or?
You know, Sean.
It's, it's a continuation from the meeting we just had with them.
Oh, okay.
So we'll get that agreement all done. We won't sign it, Liam.
Fine, I guess.
Don't sign it.
Hold them hostage.
I mean, we've had these discussions for two years and this guy comes back with different scenarios every meeting. And it's not a lot in writing and I just am not comfortable with that. So.
And a girl, that's the way to be. Fullton riding.
Yeah.
It's all fluff. Hot air.
Well, I'm, Gage, I, the, the, there's gonna be money.
What's that?
There's gonna be money for this.
No, I give it to you.
Remember last time, which was a long time ago, uh, they gave him like nine hundred million.
Yeah.
Or eight hundred, something like that. So this time I suspect there'll be a billion dollars in the deal too.
Yeah.
They'll offer.
So, yeah.
And then coming up with a justification as a community asset, like we have been tracking that along the way so we can meet at some point and get, use some actual data for what this expansion would do for us. Yeah, like, okay, cool. All right.
Thank you.
You guys ready? It's for being here.
Zooming in the morning, Jim.
Soon tomorrow morning. Thank you.
See you later. Thanks, Mariko.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, cheers. All right.
Hey, Dan Musgrave just came into Scott's office.
Dan?
Thanks.
Oh. Hold on, can you give us, can you give us just a second? Sorry, shut that door for just a second. Thank you. Do I need to go to closed session again or no?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay.
I'm actually going to close session.
I guess.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Who's got the, will you?
Great. We have Naomi Brower with us and Sadie Wild. Introduction of a new faculty. Good. This wild.
That new facility.
That's what I thought.
Not a new facility.
New faculty.
New faculty. Well, I, Sadie, I moved the heart initiative and so most of my work will be in success for prevention. Maybe tell them what HEART stands for. Oh, yeah, so HEART is health extension. It's advocacy, research, and training. Uh, so a lot of preventative work in the mental health arena, so adolescents and adults.
Yeah. What about adolescent adults or juvenile delinquent or adult delinquent?
We do those too. I mean.
We have plenty of those.
We don't discriminate.
Yeah.
So Sadie works quite a bit with the Health Department and Weaver Human Services, so we're not duplicating. It's more working with them to see how we can better serve the community and fill the gaps where needed.
Do you want her with, uh, your Center of Excellence too, or just?
I'll tell her. Well, you should be introduced. I'll, in fact, have you got a business card?
Uh, you know, not on me. I'm so sorry. I'd love to leave you my email.
Yeah, if you could do that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that would be.
Then we could, uh, uh, give that to Melissa and have her contact you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, tell me what Melissa does.
She's Center of Excellence. Uh, she has to do with, uh, intergenerational poverty, homelessness, uh, housing, all those different things.
I would love to connect with her. That would be great. I've got her information. Do you want me just to connect with Melissa or her?
Oh, me back.
Thank you. I've been working with Bryce Sherwood, who's in the Health Department.
Oh, maybe you wanted her to connect with Andy.
Yeah, for sure. You've got Andy Beadles.
Andy Beadles.
I don't know that I know Andy.
Uh, I'll, I'll send you her contact information.
Okay. That'd be great. And what does Andy do?
She runs the Weaver Housing.
Oh, really?
Uh, so she's in charge of our voucher program. We're anticipating a, uh, forty-unit apartment, uh, she'll be in charge of, directed on somewhere around, uh, Wall Avenue.
Oh, wow.
In the near future. So, but yeah, she does the vouchers, uh, the way.
Well, and she does a little bit of, uh, home care with some of those people and.
She does do that too.
So, yeah, I suspect some of that you'd be fairly directly involved with.
Yeah, that would be a great connection for me.
So, yeah.
Do you want to share a couple of projects you've been working on?
Yeah, sure. Um, oh, I have a HEART faculty that are my colleagues in nine different counties. And before I signed on, they had a big grant with certified peer support training. And so I've been taking that into Weaver County and partnering with USARA to kind of recruit people to do peer support so that they remain in recovery treatment and they're actually successful in their treatment program. And so that grant was about two point three million that we're working on. So we've got a great hybrid program that we're bringing to Weaver. Uh, so Recovery Day with that, um, and partnering with USARA. I'm partnering with Weaver State right now for their opioid awareness week.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and I teach a community education or an opioid community education dinner. And so our next one's on February twenty-fourth. And they get a free meal if they come and listen to me lecture for an hour and a half about stigma reduction and harm reduction. So that's a fun program. Um, coming up, we have a, a project with Bryce Sherwood that we're trying to bring OD map. It's an overdose mapping, um, application that's a real time. It's a overdose mapping, um, application that's a real time. So we have Intermountain and University of Utah and law enforcement that are all coming to the table to get trained on this new map. Um, it's actually used nationally and Utah is the only one who hasn't implemented the map yet. And so we're trying to bring it into Utah and Weber's been most, um, influential. And bringing that in. So we have data analysts on our team. We're trying to get that up and going. And that'll allow us to have real time overdose data in Weber so we can tell where, uh, opioids might have more fentanyl. And then what supplies, where's coming or like what little hot spots are having more overdoses so we can be more targeted. Especially in like naloxone training and making sure they have everything they need. So that's my great project right now is getting that OD map online.
Congratulations.
That's great.
Should be great, I hope, since we get that going.
That's really good, Naomi. Thank you. Mr. Jenkins, you have any questions?
No, this is good.
Mr. Flor.
No, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in and making that introduction. That's really kind.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much. It's really nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
See you later. Okay, commissioners, our next presentation will be given by, uh, our now nationally famous, uh, eating artist, uh, Sarah Swan.
Last time I saw her, she was on TV.
If I get any more pizza jokes, any more pizza pictures, if you're asking if I'm hungry.
I tell you, you ought to be on cloud nine with that victory over the weekend.
That's great.
Your husband, I'm surprised that you probably can't see him. He's up there so high in the air.
You know, I haven't actually seen him except for like five minutes. He came home that night and had to leave for work on Sunday at seven thirty. And then last night he came home.
Really? He had to go back in at seven thirty on Sunday? What do they expect out of him?
He got home last night after I was in bed. It was like ten thirty. And then he had to leave for work at three thirty this morning.
Wow.
Okay.
Well, man, during this time of year, they expect everything from him.
They got a big game coming up.
Normally, a Sunday morning's off. He has to leave by like noon to go in on Sundays, but yeah.
Wow.
Very much.
Well, I'm just telling you, I watched that game and I was amazed. I thought they'd be lucky to stick with Oregon. You know, that was the thought.
Yeah.
I mean, when they come out and it's twenty eight zip, they shut them out of the first half. Like, oh, my gosh, that was.
It was super fun. Tell Gloria text me and told me that I was eating pizza. And then after that, that was the first one I got and I was like, what? Like, are they at the game? And she's like, no, you're on TV. And I'm like, and then after that, by the end of the game, I had seventy eight messages.
Did you?
From across the country. My old fiance in Las Vegas, are you gonna get more pizza at halftime?
Oh, my gosh.
Horrible.
Yeah, we're just sitting there with the A zero.
You eating pizza.
Did you watch her?
No.
I just sit here and watch.
It was a long time. It was so long that at first you might have been like, is that Sarah? But then it just continued. So by the end, there was no question that it was me.
Did Brett Mus, Brett Musburger happen to chime in at all?
Who's that?
The answer.
Oh, I'm like, who's that?
Answer. Do you remember that, when he did that to that gal on that?
So you got your Vegas ticket yet?
I tried. I, I booked a hotel in Lago and I tried to get flights, twelve hundred bucks.
Oh, I know. It's crazy. Are you kidding me?
Kidding me?
Anything in that low lie to Vegas? Six hundred bucks a ticket.
Oh, no, today they're twelve hundred bucks.
What's that?
I looked an hour ago.
Yeah.
Again, to see if they changed. Twelve hundred bucks.
Oh, yeah. They were six hundred yesterday.
Oh, they're twelve today.
Oh, okay.
Wow. You'll be driving down, huh?
I'm gonna make a drive. I'm not paying twelve hundred dollars a flight to Las Vegas.
Wow.
Wow. So what bowl's that?
It's a championship game.
Well, that's a champion, all for the, uh.
We'll go to the Rose Bowl.
Pac twelve.
Pac twelve.
December third.
Woo.
Nobody's won yet.
December third. Hell, Gage, can we get tickets to the game? Can we get stay halfway?
Well, I'll be gone.
We've actually talked.
You will, we won't.
Yeah. How do we get, can we get tickets from the U or need to go right through your league?
For the championship?
For the championship.
Yeah.
I could probably get a ticket.
Could you? Cause we got a place to stay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will, uh, I'll, just let me know how many you'd need and then I'll tell Colton.
I can use two.
So four.
Four, four tickets, two apiece.
Okay, I'll, uh, work on it.
Woo, that'd be great.
I know somebody.
In fact, I like the color of the jerseys. That's what I.
The gray?
I did like the gray.
Is there any way I could get six? So I'd be willing to pay for it.
Let me ask.
Yeah, beyond that, if I could get six, hell, I could get Gary to come in there with his plane and fly me down.
Who?
Gary Knight.
Oh.
And I could take my crew.
Um.
If, if you could get six, I'd buy them, those six. But if you can't, two, I'd be happy as heck for it. And I'll buy those two.
You never put a note, like what?
I'm driving. I'm just in a drive. Just be glorying me.
Yeah. Well, like I said, if you can't get six, it'd just be Becky and me.
I'm gonna go to Domino's.
And watch it on TV?
Wow.
Hope they have the same.
That'd be one great trip.
Go ahead. Go ahead with your presentation, please.
I know.
I thought it was good. I wouldn't have known unless you'd have put it up.
Oh, well, everybody else knows, trust me.
Great.
Um.
What a compliment.
Thank you.
That was great.
Appreciate that. Uh.
I thought your boy looked cute.
He did look cute. That was cute. That was the one cute.
He was cute.
Face paint.
Yeah, that was great. I thought, look at Sarah face painted. I thought it was great.
Um, we, I sent you an email about the holiday thing.
Yeah.
Scott Park is building the schedule. He just is pressuring me and I said I didn't know. So he needs to know about admin leave, which you guys normally do eight hours during the holidays.
Okay, so commissioners, what we've normally done is we usually, uh, for the last several years, we ended up, before my time, they ended up giving Friday after Thanksgiving because it was just so dead here. So that's another county day that people were not open here.
We give them a full or half?
Ha, we give them a full day on Friday, the day after Thanksgiving.
That's consistent. Most, every other county does that as well.
And now what, and now what we've done is we give them a half day on the twenty fourth and a half day on the thirty first. And, uh, we usually, uh, uh, we'd like to have some crew here those two days because it's essential, but we usually close down by noon on both of those days. Uh, then we usually would give them some admin time.
Well, since we've been here, me and Gage, last three years, we've done that.
Yes.
Okay.
So the half a day before Thanksgiving.
No, Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve.
And New Year's Eve.
All right.
Okay, so we give them another eight hours.
Basically, and some people can't use it. So typically we just give the eight hours. The generally, it is a half day.
Share of scan.
People can't, so they flex it. So basically it's just eight hours. Use it as your department.
Got it.
Can, need to. Um, so that for this year, we need to make a decision on. And then for next year, you saw my proposal, just putting it in writing so that people can plan.
I'm okay with that. It's up to you though.
Well, I thought you wanted to go to a full day.
No, I just, I just do the half and half, but put it on the holidays. Get those people know. I think we'll actually have more people working those days because people take it off not knowing. If we're going to do, it's always a big mystery. So they take it off, but I actually think you'll see people come in if they know.
Listen, this is as early as we ever could. I remember calling the twenty first and twenty second for years. The commission never made a decision in advance.
Right.
So this is a better way and it gives you another tool to recruit employees.
It does.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to have the policy just be consistent so they can find on it a year out, two months out.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Don't make them, don't make them wait till the week before.
And then the other question is if we want to switch Columbus Day and Juneteenth.
Oh.
I got your email on that. I like Columbus Day.
So do I.
It's a, it's a controversial holiday now.
I know it is. And I want to give them all the high five bird.
Juneteenth is also controversial, but I.
Oh, Juneteenth was a federal holiday. Now he made it a federal holiday last year, didn't he? Now it's a state holiday.
So state's not officially giving people the day off. But the word I have is that they are going to.
That's what I.
Is the Columbus Juneteenth the same day? Just a different holiday?
One's in June and one's in October. Or is Columbus in October?
It's in October.
Yeah.
So you're saying, let's go to Juneteenth and give October the boot.
When's Juneteenth? That's.
Sixteenth.
Sixteen.
Right, the sixteenth, when I can.
I struggle with both, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah.
Uh, I know it's, it's thing, but in terms of our current social climate and recognizing what Juneteenth stands for, um.
What does it stand for?
Nineteenth. It's the day that slavery.
But the state hasn't done it as slavery.
Haven't.
They have not, they won't do till legislative session, but the word is that they will.
We have Martin.
I know that Utah County, Wasatch, Washington, all made decisions based off that. They've all added it to their calendars.
Look at that, all the Count Musselman's on.
Wasatch, Utah.
Utah.
Yeah, we've got some friends on there.
Uh, Washington.
Yeah, I'm with Harvard a little. This really upsets me. I hate to give them a win.
I'm not.
It bothered me that much.
I'm not upset. I just, I don't, uh, my, honestly, my thing is, is it's, we have all those holidays. It gets so packed around, uh, the Fourth of July, the twenty fourth of July and everything else and getting people to schedule the time and.
That's every two to three weeks, we have a vacation.
Yeah.
That's the part I struggle with. But we need to make a decision on Columbus Day now?
You need to do it soon because Scott's loading the payroll counters in the computer system. So that's why.
So can't we wait till after the legislative session, see what the state does? That's what I'd like to do.
Is the state just gonna add another day and, and let them keep Columbus and just add another day?
Yes.
Good night.
I'm not in favor of that.
Yeah, I mean.
We're just gonna give them eight hours of flex, the twenty fourth of, December and the thirty first of December.
Yeah, that's why my suggestion was to do one or the other, not both of them.
Right.
Well, I'm a no vote until after the session. And then if we decide to add it, Scott will just have to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure. It can't be that big.
Yeah, I, I'd like, if the, that, I think that's what I said. If the state does it, we should do it. If they don't do it, then stay where we are.
Hold on. Keep in mind that if the state does it, then they're gonna just add another day and they're not gonna take away, they're gonna still have Columbus Day off.
Well.
That's why the suggestion came. That's why I said, why don't we take out Columbus, add Juneteenth at the beginning of the year?
Sure makes sense.
Put those on the calendar so that we're not actually taking anything away. We're going to thirteen instead of twelve. We're just moving things and adding.
Yeah. Well, I'm a no vote if we, for both of them.
I like messaging in advance of that because as soon as we do that, they're gonna say, well, they took something away.
Notice the change. If you do it now, you're not gonna notice a change because the calendar will just.
Right. So what do you, you think it's best?
You'll be highlighting it.
You, you think we go with you, Pink, and, uh,
Yeah.
Take out Columbus?
Yeah.
That's what your suggestion is?
That's what she said, Michael.
I mean, I do understand the controversy surrounding it, but I think the significance in the current social climate of the holidays is important to recognize. And I just worry about me getting crucified, but I'll take it. We don't address it, that we're not sensitive and we don't care and all of those.
You take the heat, but you can just say, them dirty bangers, I couldn't have to move.
Those dang commissioners. Hey, listen, I try not to do that. I actually try to take a little accountability here.
But you're saying it's too late if we wait for the session.
It's not too late. It'll just highlight it because it'll, the counters will have already been sent out.
Newspaper article, it'll be everything.
If, if the state adopts it and it gets to that point and we don't.
I'm gonna go the other way.
Columbus Day on the counter, you're going to add another holiday if you do it because otherwise.
I think we take Sarah's suggestion.
Right.
Good for you.
The state didn't, didn't, and we didn't, we don't.
Right.
Yeah, I'm gonna go with your suggestion.
We're better, we're better to be proactive. Okay, I'm gonna back her too.
Oh.
Are you? Do one.
Well, she's a higher.
Right all over.
She's in my portfolio. What the heck? Come on. It's gotta be right.
You got him wrapped around your little thing. Come on, Gage.
I'm working on it.
I don't, I, I have, I'm frustrated with it because I, for the people, I want them to be able to do business, but October is a busier time for us. They're gonna have to just save up their leave. They use it for hunting. They, they plan on it for other things, but it is closer to our tax time. One more day less for the managers to prepare. So this is how it's gonna go down. We're gonna give you Juneteenth, but we're not gonna give you the Columbus.
Now, I don't plan on highlighting that anywhere. I just plan on putting Juneteenth and then the half days and.
For guys like me, they've been around for thirty years.
Oh, sure.
I've always known to take Columbus off. What do you mean I'm not taking Columbus off? What do you mean that's not, yeah. It'll come to light. It just won't be.
Yeah, we're just not, I don't think.
Highlighting anything.
I think we just say, look, we're giving you this whenever it is and check your calendar.
Yeah. The, the thing is, people are looking for that now. They're already, they've been calling for months now. Hey, are you guys doing this? What's going on? Whatever. So they will notice that one, but the rest of it.
Well, well, just, uh, I'd like you to present that on our expanded department head this, in December. We also need to, uh,
Won't, won't you send that?
Procure my Jason Horn.
I'll send out the calendar so they'll see it.
Kind of looks like, right.
What about Jason?
W- when you tell him, I need to be on the calendar for, uh, expanded department head when we do the ornament deal.
Uh huh.
Will you also tell him Jason Horn needs to be on that for the new procurement, the new, we just talked about that new policy.
Your policy.
Okay. Well, there. That's it.
Then Scott can, Commissioner Jenkins can do whatever he wants to do when he's the chair.
Well, I can't take it off when you put it on.
No, well, that'll be, that'll be in January.
Yeah, but I got two to one. I'm not gonna do something like that.
No, 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 I wasn't meaning that. I was.
What do you mean?
What you put on the agenda for expanded department head me.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't referring to that. I wasn't trying.
I was trying to rub them in my nose.
No, not at all. I was trying to actually put a little plumeria, little flower in there.
Kind of.
No, no, if you remember, I'm the one that leaped away first, so.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner. Hey, I'll work on tickets.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll let you know as soon as I, I'll talk to him today and see if he knows anything. It's not over.
Size two X Colton Swan autographed jerseys.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Work on that too.
Go for one of the helmets.
Well, you know.
That's what I'm looking for.
His linebackers, I paid attention. They really played good.
Devin Lloyd is dressed, uh,
It was great.
He is picked right now, number eleven in the draft, first round, number eleven.
Which one's that?
Devin Lloyd.
Oh, really?
He's a outside? Yeah, big kid. He made a couple of really good plays.
He's just like this huge rock hard.
Yeah.
Well, they highlighted him on a couple of the tackles and just talked about how good he's done.
Oh, yeah.
Can he bulldog? Can he bulldog a steer?
I'm not being bulldog steer.
Bulldog, hell, he just pushes them over.
That's really true.
Steer'd be in bad shape.
He's like seven feet tall and.
So we need to bulldog it off Clyde's tail.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying.
Clyde's tail.
He doesn't need to ride anything. He can run as fast as steer.
Yeah. It's true.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Wow. All right, commissioners, we're gonna keep moving. We're on to our, our next one is our twenty twenty two draft budget presentation discussion, discussion. I'll tell you that we're still behind schedule. Uh, Scott Park, Ricky Hatch and Stephanie Ebert. I think, uh,
We're not behind schedule by much. Five minutes is all.
Yeah, we're close. And fifteen, twenty, five.
Hi, Andy Gage. Good, how are you doing?
Okay.
Okay.
Christie? Thank you, Scott. What about the, there she is.
Here they are.
Well, Mr. Bond. Gomer would say.
It's like you're still waiting for that.
Yo.
That's what my notes says.
That's kind of my new, uh, go to little treat.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of fiber and they taste pretty good.
I'm looking down.
Calories now, that's. They're out, but not.
Doesn't happen often.
You know, normal. Yeah, chips and stuff, so I like that.
Commissioners, how are you doing? Long time no see.
Yeah.
I, uh, have a question for you as we're waiting for, for her to come back in. We've been using the new Kiss Flow software for our budget changes. Um, and.
The wood software?
It's called Kiss Flow. It comes, it says Weaver County, but if you click on it, it says Kiss Flow. We've got one out there that's pending commissioner approvals. It's for the animal shelter to replace the washer and dryer that died. Nineteen thousand dollars. It's an expensive washer and dryer. But then he.
Holy crap.
Yep.
Well, they'd be a big commercial.
They're big commercial ones. They're not like your nice washer and dryer.
So what are they washing?
I got it breaking her off.
Um, it's a very good question. I don't know.
Oh, they have.
I assume it's their uniforms and all sorts of stuff, and yeah.
Stuff like that that they.
The animals' uniform?
I would think the workers. Um, they've had a commercial dryer and washer out there for a long time and it died, basically. So they're just looking to replace it. Um, and they don't have any money in their budget, so they need to dip into their fund balance. They do have emergency reserve.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
So um, I mean, I can have you sign off on this.
Yep, yeah, I could talk to.
So Gage, do you know what they're washing and drying?
You know, I think it's a combination of some of the uh uniforms, and I think they use a lot of the blankets and stuff for the pets or whatever it is. Blankets, I don't know. It's.
Yeah, but they talk to you about.
But they're, yeah, they're big conver, they're not just.
They do it so it doesn't spread disease when they pull a blanket or something soft out of a cat or what, not the dogs, but the cats.
Right.
And they throw them back in, that's helps so it doesn't spread disease.
Wow.
We take pretty good care of our animals out there, including keep making sure they're air-conditioned in the.
I'm a little surprised they just don't put them on a little bit of hay or straw or something.
So.
All the cats that I got were in straw.
They're straw. Well, most of all my cats.
On the previous system that we used, I had the ability to go in and record the votes of the three commissioners. There was a log that tracked that it was me that said yes and not you.
For what?
Uh, on budget changes.
Oh.
And then I would scan the signed piece of paper that had your signatures on it, so I'm very comfortable that every budget change in the system had a signed signature.
Correctly, huh?
However, there is the risk that whoever's in my position could go rogue, and even though they would be recorded that I'm recording, you know, changing the budget. You guys don't check the detail of the budget. You know, it would be long after I messed the budget up in order to, before you caught me essentially. So in order to establish good controls, I changed it in the Kiss Flow system so that I cannot approve on paper. I mean, I can be one of the two commissioner signatures, so I wanted to say at least one other body that's not me has to click on it. And I did that so that, you know, you could email me your approval if Gage went in and added his approvals, but one of you three actually have to click the button on Kiss Flow.
Good idea.
So I can't.
Thanks for doing that. That's a good idea.
And it keeps it, it just keeps everybody safe.
Yeah.
Um, and so what I'm saying is, is there's a budget change out there now in Kiss Flow that I cannot push through. Even if you guys sign this piece of paper, I, I need one of you to go and actually click the button.
I've gotta learn how, learn how to work Kiss Flow and then I'll do it.
Yeah, and I can, and you should get an email still. You should be able to just click on the little button in the email. And if you lose the email, if you just went to Kiss Flow, you'd be able to see all the things that are pending your approval, so it's a little easier than the other system. I'm happy to come over and show you when you have a few minutes sometime or show Shelley and, and you know, Stacy.
Tell Shelley or Stacy.
Would you tell them?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll give them a tutorial and then uh. No, that was just me throwing that in there because the commissioner, the sheriff's really eager to get this purchase, and I'm like, I gotta get somebody else to click the button now. I just can't do it for you. Okay, this is.
Here we go.
This is the twenty twenty-two capital operating budget. I wanted to give you a quick preview.
Chris Crockett back, by the way.
He texted me today. He was still out.
Crazy.
I think today's his last day of his quarantine.
Yeah, I think he'll be back tomorrow.
Yeah.
So he never officially got it. He was just quarantined because it was.
No, he got it.
Oh, he got it.
He's vaccinated and he got it.
Dude, I got a daughter that had it and I, she come over Sunday. She says, Dad, it's been ten days. You're safe. I said, you sit that in the table. Well, anything to do with you.
Yeah, he was pretty sick for a while, too.
Yeah.
It's gonna be tough. Yeah, yeah.
You're right. I didn't even think about that.
What's that?
Just making sure that we have an efficient meeting tomorrow.
Just trying to.
It was on the front page of the paper on Saturday, which is great, so we know we've got, you know, we're not hiding behind anything. We've got a lot. It's great. This is what you're gonna do tomorrow night, right?
Yeah, this is what I'm gonna do tomorrow, so I just wanted to give you a quick preview. I'm not gonna give you the whole presentation. I'm just gonna, so I'm gonna fly through this a little bit. If you want me to stop, let me know.
Fly away.
So initially, I always go through these first four slides, and it basically shows how Weaver County Corporation gets its money and where Weaver County Corporation spends its money. This two hundred and thirty-five million includes all the restricted sales tax, the money we get that goes straight to you dot, straight to UTA. We never even see it. But we have to report it as our revenue because it's taxed under our authority. So.
All money goes to school district, the water district.
No, this is just Weaver County Corporation, so this is none of the property taxes that goes to the other entities. This is just, so most of this is the WACOG Transportation Development Fund. And um, you know, we've got it here, library and other stuff like that. You've got grants, which was pretty big this year because of ARPA and in previous year CARES Act.
So Timmy did a pretty good job of, you know.
So I read the paper.
Yeah, I read the article and it was fine. I, I didn't see anything that was glaringly wrong.
No, I thought it was pretty good.
Here's how we spend it. Again, streets get the biggest portion because of that WACOG money. So it looks like public safety does, you know, is only twenty-one percent, and it's true when you consider the county as a whole, but we've also got the libraries in here. We've got. The general government, we've got uh public health.
So I always tell people that public safety is over half our budget. I know if you take streets out on revenue and expenditures, that'd be pretty close.
Well, you guys don't have a ton of control over a lot of this money, right? The statute tells us where we, what we gotta do with it. And so this is where we then focus. I basically say that, look, commissioners don't have a ton of control over these other funds, but they do the general fund. Here's how the general fund is funded. Forty-five percent from property taxes, twenty-one percent from sales taxes. And again, some of this, I don't wanna go into too many specifics, but not all that sales tax you have control over. But this is the general fund, so then charges for services. And then when we talk about expenses, this is how it's spent. Fifty-one percent goes to public safety, so over half the budget. General government's thirty-three. This year, public safety is normally a little higher. This year, this other is uh, these are transfers out, and this is going to be. To do the remodel of the OECD. So we're transferring money to our capital projects fund, and that's why this is a little bit bigger than it is normally. And this is a little bit smaller. If we look at this by function or by, so it's employee compensation is sixty percent of what we do. Transfers, again, this is higher than normal. That's the eleven percent, and that's for the capital projects, and then our other operating expenditures. You see training and travels is one percent of what we do. Equipment's about three percent. So this is what you guys really have control over, so. We're gonna go down now. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the employee compensation, because employees that watch are really interested in this, so we've got the three percent cost of living increase. We've got the one-time bonus based off evaluations, and then we're covering the fourteen percent increase in health insurance. So if the county was paying ninety-ten, I only have to pay ten percent of that fourteen percent increase. Does that make sense?
Pretty generous.
It is pretty generous. I'm gonna then touch on different capital projects. So twelve point nine million in capital projects, the jails getting one point seven, culture parks and rec one point two. That doesn't count OECD. I listed OECD separately at five point eight million, just because it was so big. Um, flood control and stormwater projects, two million. That assumes that the tax increase goes through, but I just wanted to list it there because that's what we're budgeting for. And then other infrastructure equipment, that's just everything lumped together that was small. That's about two point two million. And then we still are adding the one point seven million to our repair and replacement fund for future years. After that, I go through and I hit the different fund balance forecasts. So the general fund is right at the limit of where it should be. The library, this was our intentional paying down of the debt. Um, and we're gonna, this includes the tax increase, and it kind of bounces around the minimum and then it kind of recovers. I didn't add a line on here saying what happens if we don't include the tax increase, because we're not gonna spend more than we have. We would just have to then cut services. And that means maybe we're not open on the nights and the weekends as much, or maybe we stop putting so much money into materials. So I'm not worried about the fund balance going negative because we're not gonna spend more money than we make. Um, but this is just kind of the projection of keeping the library fund balance right where it should be, including that tax increase. Next is the paramedic fund. It's high above its recommended fund balance, and the reason why is we're saving money in case we need an additional paramedic unit, which we may need. Depending on the study that we do this year.
We said, yeah.
Yeah, so we have that money. We don't need, and even if we don't need it this year, we're going to need it in the next few years with the way that the county's growing. So that's what that money is saved for. Though we do have a gradual spend down that we're keeping our operating expenses appropriately matched with our revenues. Here's the library, excuse me, the health department, and this big bump up is because we have all these federal dollars come in and replaced what the county would have spent otherwise. And so that just happened to be a fluke, not the, I don't wanna say benefit, but just a byproduct of the COVID and all the. The grant money that came in there is that we stopped doing everything we normally were doing and did everything that was federally funded with COVID. So we were able to save money because we didn't have the ability to spend it. We didn't, you know, all of our people were pulled off of their existing programs and started working on federally funded tasks. So that's why that went up. You okay?
No, I was just thinking. Uh, I need a copy of our uh storm drain study. Because tomorrow night, somebody's gonna say something about that.
We're going to have Ashley, Gary, and Joe there as well answer questions.
Okay, because we need to be able to defend that.
Yes.
We've got a big map that shows the different projects, and I'll, we'll get to that. It's in here.
Oh, is it? Okay. I didn't know you'd gone that far.
Well, we'll, we'll see how far you want to go. Okay. So here's the municipal services fund, and that with our projections is right where it should be. Uh, I'm not gonna say too much about that, other than some of the individuals that may be there noticed uh a tax increase. On the municipal services fund proposed at forty-six percent. Now, the reason why we did that is because we have to send out that notice in August before we have our final sales tax data and before we have our budget data, and so. Once we received that final sales tax projection and the budget data, we determined we didn't have to raise taxes in twenty twenty-two.
I'd like you to add, can you add one more thing to this slide?
Sure.
Uh, is not needed for twenty twenty-two. Consequently, it was removed from, we, we, we won't be hearing it. Something that just says uh, uh, because it's higher collections that is not needed. And it is not anticipated being needed for, and currently, yeah, something, something.
Not need for five years. Or something like that. I'll, I'll, I'll work something.
Something that just says, hey, look, yeah.
Well, maybe just said we've removed it.
Okay.
There you go. I had to admit to five years because we don't know.
That's right.
Okay, yep, I'll, I'll.
I just say we removed it from the public hearing.
Yeah, just remove it. That's a, been removed or something.
I'll format.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. All right. Okay, next, we're gonna talk about the county-wide tax increase. So the county is proposing a four and a half percent tax increase. On a three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar residence, that's nineteen dollars and fifty cents a year of business. It's thirty-five dollars. It's gonna be used. A million for flood control and a million one for the library. So we have now, I'm gonna go a little bit into why are we doing a tax increase when the general fund balance is so high? And my intention is showing this slide is that each one of these lines are their own separate fund. And once the money goes into these funds, the commissioners really don't have much, you don't have the ability to pull them out of those funds and use them for a different purpose. If we say.
Thankfully, we don't.
Yeah, if we say we're gonna tax you for the Weaver Morgan Health Department, and that money goes into that fund, we can't pull it out and use it for the libraries or for the flood control.
Right.
Now, what we can do is we can shift money between those lines going forward, so in future years, we can adjust these lines, and we've done that in the past. And so if someone asks, well, why don't you just adjust the lines going forward, I'm gonna say, actually, we have. The last three years, these are the shifts we've done from the general fund. We've used the general fund to help not have a tax increase in the paramedic fund. We helped them not have a tax increase in the Weaver Morgan Health Department. We've also set aside some money for flood control, and we put a lot of money into funding the libraries. So we have been using.
Important slide right there.
Yeah, so we've been using the general fund, and what we don't wanna do is continue to raid the general fund to fund all these other funds. So this shows that the commissioners have been cognizant of, have more money in the general fund. We've shifted it down so we didn't have to do tax increases in these prior years. But at a certain point, we need to prepare for the inflation that's coming and already hitting us, and we can't continue to hit the general fund for that. So we need to do small tax increase for the library and for the flood control. So in twenty thirteen, the voters approved a general obligation bond, and that built the Southwest Library. Uh, we didn't raise taxes to pay for the new operating costs like the salaries, the building maintenance of utilities, but instead chose to fund those. Out of our um existing library budget and also by doing that transfer from the general fund to the library. But with other businesses over the last few years, the county's seen tremendous pressure to increase salaries and wages to retain employees. Uh, many of whom are earning far below what the median is for the county. As a result, the libraries or the county's had to pour all of its uh new tax revenue into salaries and wages in order to attract and retain qualified staff. And it's been struggling to maintain the library facilities in good working order, and, and we need to do that in order to prevent more costly and significant repairs in the future. So what we're proposing is a one point one million dollar tax increase that would be used to fund library system improvements. It's gonna allow them to stabilize their operating budget. And any money that's saved that's above the minimum fund balance we need in the library will be swept into a capital project account. That's restricted just for library upgrades and repairs, so we'll be able to maintain that system going forward in the future. So that's the reason why we're doing the library tax increase now. Um, Linda wanted to show this slide. I'm on the fence a little bit on this slide. I think it's very good to illustrate that, you know. Weaver County Library, fifty-nine percent of what we spend is on salaries and wages. When you compare that to all the other Wasatch Front libraries. I mean, we're close to Provo a little bit, like Salt Lake, but you know, the high is eighty-three percent in Orem. So we're spending not a ton of our money on salaries and wages, and that's, I mean, we've tried to be as competitive as possible. Half of our employees are part-time and they don't get benefits. When you look at what we're spending on collections, you compare us to Davis County. Davis County spends two dollars and twenty-three cents per capita on. Books and materials, and we spend double that. And then when you look at the total cost of the libraries, Davis County spends twenty dollars per resident. We're spending forty dollars per resident, which is far less than Salt Lake. But the big difference is Davis County is a book repository, and Weaver County is a fully functional library service that does a lot more than just trade books.
That's when your people gotta explain that, library board.
Yep, and so here's just some interesting statistics to show you that. Forty-eight percent of all Weaver County residents have a library card. We had more than a million visits in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. The numbers were a bit lower. Uh, we loaned two point four million items. That's nine point one items for every resident in the county. Or if you look at the library cards, that's almost twenty items per library card. And we had over forty-seven hundred classes, eighty-three thousand people in attendance.
You can use our libraries.
Yeah, they're not just book repositories. They have meeting rooms, they have um rooms for classes. They have the big theaters in there where they can, you know, show. Our library system's not just a book repository. It's, it's a bigger.
You can have Corps of Honor, so you can have, did one there the other night. There you go, yeah.
So they're more community centers than just libraries, and that's why.
You know?
Yeah. That's why uh we're spending more on them. Because it's not a book repository, but that's what the voters said they wanted in twenty thirteen when they approved that bond.
I voted against that, but I got outvoted, so we're operating it the way people told us to.
That's how they told us to operate it. That's how we're operating it.
I gotta go around with Mark Johnson and Andy on that.
Yeah, good luck, Gage.
We've, we've got that one point nine coming from the state, right?
For that, yeah. Well, it's the public hearing or what are you talking about?
No, from the ARPA funds for the state.
Yeah, they've awarded, they've tentatively awarded it to us. We haven't seen the actual word doc.
Didn't, but I heard, I heard they were cutting checks first week of December.
Yeah, that's what we heard.
We have to get the grant agreements, and then you have to approve it first. I still have, have not seen those, so we're still waiting. Yes.
Just wanna make sure we got.
Are you sure one of you guys didn't say that? Because we were surprised. Somebody told us you're gonna see that faster than you thought.
Yeah.
Stevie. Who?
Oh, that was Steve. Steve Hunter.
Oh, that was Stevie.
All right, so I got notified that we hadn't, like, filled out all the pre-award stuff. We're waiting for the grant document now.
All right, so Gage, he's done all the paperwork for it.
Oh, I know, no. We're, we're ready to go. I just gotta make sure we have a place to put it.
Want you to know that Scott's done that, so he's just waiting for them to get back to us.
They should send us a formal grant agreement document for you guys to approve and commission.
Great.
And that's what I'm.
Uh, but I'm assuming that that, the documents we're receiving are based on a particular project site.
Right.
Was it tight? I'm assuming, because everything we put in with that application.
It was on that specific site, and they told us we can't change the scope. So if we need to move the building, we're, we're, I don't know, we'd have to get back over there.
Yeah, well, that's, well, we'll probably lose it.
Let's get back to libraries.
I'm, I'm sure they'll do it, yeah.
Okay. All right, sorry. So then we're gonna transition over to flood control.
Hold on.
Okay.
So do you go back to most of million people? One or two, that's great. Thank you.
Okay.
With the flood control.
So we, over the last two years, we set aside a million bucks. We've got a backlog of over nineteen million. Actually, it's a lot higher than that. If you look at the needs of the county, it's about a hundred million.
Well, I thought the study said thirty.
Thirty million is for the unincorporated areas. This is county-wide issues. So like the little things to fix my parents' subdivision where they get flooded all the time. That's not a general fund issue. That's a municipal services fund issue.
Yeah.
So um, here's a list of some of those projects. This is just a sampling of high priority projects. We have a big map that shows where all of these are, and uh. Sean, you're gonna be there. Gary's gonna be there, and Ashley's gonna be there in case anybody has specific questions. We have a couple of pictures where we just wanted to show what some of these projects look like, so there's what happens if we don't do maintenance. The water backs up and damages infrastructure. We have uh issues like this where we've got stormwater that just doesn't have anywhere to go. And then uh we have this one, too.
It doesn't have anywhere to go, but it can go to the Great Salt Lake if we're managing it. We just need to bring that up, because for the unlearned, they'll say, well, so. Or is it all gone? It can get to the Great Salt Lake. It's supposed, it's supposed to get to the Great Salt Lake.
And the issue that we have is more and more Weaver County's being paved and has, you know. It doesn't go into the ground. It goes into the rivers.
So much of this is regular maintenance because the canals, this waterway gets overgrown. And you know, the Frank Mides and all that kinda stuff.
And we have some pictures that showed all that, but it was really hard to see what was going on. It just looked like a big patch of weed, so we didn't put those in here.
Okay.
And then here's just another example of what happens when we don't have the right size, you know, pipe, we, I mean, washing out roadways. I don't know how you get from point A to point B now on this road. So the next steps, we're gonna have public comment. Linda will be there. The library board is going to have some people there. Uh, Sean's gonna be in his group. We'll take comment for however long you guys wanna take comment. We're not taking any action. We're gonna take action on the fourteenth at ten AM when we adopt the final budget.
Yeah, we won't take comment on the fourteenth.
Correct. I mean, I suppose you could if you wanted to, but you don't have to.
Traditionally, you don't.
Yeah. Also, what we normally do is we make any adjustments. So I've got a meeting with you a week from today to go over adjustments from the tentative to the final. It's just a few little things that have come up, and we'll get, you know, these additional items, so plus any decisions you make on uh tomorrow night. If you wanna change the amount of the tax increase down, then we would work that through for the December fourteenth meeting.
What's your feel on this?
So I've had more than two dozen people call me. Um, I tried using, I think I told you this, I tried using the argument that, you know, social security inflation was five point nine percent. And we're asking for less than that, four point five percent, because we're cognizant that, you know, everybody costs are going up, and that argument fell flat with everyone I tried it on. Um, I was surprised at that. I thought that that would make more sense. Most people were just mad, saying you're just, it's just a debt by a thousand cuts. And that's what everybody who talked to me said is like, yeah, you're raising it just a little amount, but the school district's raising it, and then. All the, the other districts are raising it, and we just can't keep up with all the tax increases. So I never spoke to anybody who was in favor of it. Um.
Well, I would answer, I would have said at that point, when they say it's death by a thousand cuts, say, look, we agree with that. But we gotta keep up too.
Yeah.
So we got the same problem everybody else has got. Labor, people, uh libraries, it's keeping it all going. So we agree, no argument, we got the same problem.
And if you want, I mean, I have several examples from the library of positions that we couldn't fill, and you know, we, we put it out. We had forty people apply for it, of which. You know, five were qualified and none of them showed up for the interview because we weren't paying enough, or because we asked them to work nights and weekends, and it's, they don't wanna work nights and weekends. They just wanna work eight to five and be done, and we're saying, well, no, the libraries are open to serve the public. We don't close at five PM. We're open till nine, and we work. On Saturdays, we work on holidays. We're open. Um, and that's a hard, I mean, we have to attract people to do that.
I sure got a lot of emails from, you know, you can tell the library board's been active because I got a lot of emails. Say, hey, they have these vote for.
Yeah. So that's the presentation that will go. I mean, I have different, I have a whole bunch of other material prepared in case there are questions. So last time the format was, uh, the commissioners took a whole bunch of questions and said, we'll answer them. Then after about three hours worth of questions, we stopped and we went back and answered. By then, about half the people have left. And we heard the same question over and over and over and over again. So my thought would be if you're going to accept questions, that maybe we go through. I don't know, ten or fifteen, and then answer the questions, and then let more people go and then answer the questions. I don't know if we wanna answer one after another.
You don't think we'll have a hundred people here, most of you.
I, I don't think so. I don't think this is like twenty sixteen. But you never know.
And we'll have Zoom comments. I'm assuming people will watch it on Zoom.
What happened in twenty sixteen?
They had the big tax increase, the twenty-six or uh, the twenty-six percent?
It was, well, it ended up being twenty percent. Yeah, but we had more than four hundred and fifty people there. We went.
Yeah, but was that the, the library?
No, that was general fund.
General fund.
Yeah, just the overall.
Yeah, mostly for the sheriff office.
Right.
Um, but we had people, we were there till eleven, eleven-thirty at night with comments. And then we had, that was in August, and we did another one in November, and it was the same thing. It was, we were there till eleven o'clock at night. We probably had.
Well, another big part of this is the fact that we promised, and I'd be glad to say this, we promised when we came in. That we would manage this in small increments. So, you know, three and four and five percent increases that went along, and no twenties anymore. So people could see that it's, we wanna flatten it out as much as possible, and that's what we're doing. We're giving to our commitment.
Five years later now.
It's five years later, and we're not even asking for what inflation has eaten in value.
I know.
We're asking for four and a half percent inflation this one year was five point nine percent, not counting any of the other years. So we're trying to stay under that. We're trying to be cognizant, although I'll say when I try that argument that we.
Wants to manage inflation, inflation with new growth, but nobody wants new growth.
But if you add that argument with the fact that we promised to do it incrementally, slow it little by little, then it makes a lot of sense. Comes together in a very powerful statement.
And I present this to you as commissioners. And I present this to you as commissioners, I don't present it to the public, and so I don't know what, I mean, if you want to say that. You've decided not to do the municipal services fund tax increase. Um, you know, if you wanna read a statement saying that, or if you wanna have this discussion about inflation, I'm happy to bring it up. Um, but I'll present it to you guys, and then if you wanna, so however you guys, your format, however you wanna do it. Um, if we have, and maybe we just play it by ear, and if there's, you know, ten people that show up, we. I'll just present everything, and if there's, you know, three hundred people that show up, maybe you you listen to people talk for a while, and take, and then stop it, and let us answer questions. So we don't have the same question thirty times. So that's kind of up to you guys, how you wanna. Play that. But this is basically what I'm gonna present.
But you know, we'll we'll handle the questions like we always do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I trust it will go okay.
Sure.
My 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 question, this has to do with our mask mandate folks that like to come in.
Yeah.
That's not what we're, that's not what this hearing will be about.
Yeah.
It's not on, masks are not on the agenda.
Correct.
So.
Are you still comfortable with the amounts that we intend to rate, or that we're announcing the two point one million dollars, the four and a half percent?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah, I would do, if it was up to me, I'd raise it a little more, first of all, the reasons, but it's not up to me, this is what we've agreed to, the three of us, and so I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, unless you have any other questions, that's what I was, that's what I'm planning to present tomorrow, I'll make that one change that you talked about. On the municipal services fund, just saying we're not doing that this year.
Mister Bond.
There's a an unincorporated. Water agenda, trying to deal with stormwater, that's everything, and then there's a countywide that you probably would be working with WACAG on, WACAG on. To get more of a countywide perspective on. Is the thirty million, you said thirty million is the unincorporated, you said the hundred million is a countywide.
Including the cities, now.
So I wanted to differentiate that, in my mind, that probably is helpful to you too, is that we've got two different agendas going on here at the same time. You're addressing the flood control, which is a countywide project, that you may connect with WACAG on, countywide. The unincorporated agenda has not yet been addressed, to my knowledge, right?
Well, yes and no, so the.
So when you, when you go to the, to the municipal services. I wouldn't mind commenting on that, because really, rather than divide it the way John's talking. It's it's upstream and downstream, that's really the division there that needs to take place, and upstream. Is everything above the dam and up in the hills, and how it all comes out, because. The county is the first to receive that water, when it comes off of uh. Of uh Forest Service ground in most locations, now North Ogden Pleasant, you would get some of that. But uh they, and that all flows through to the county. So when you get beyond those guys, then it's downstream, and it's everything. From them out into the lake, and from them to the lake is us, and that's the downstream part. And uh there's a fair amount on the study of both of those to do.
Yeah.
And your folks is a good example of that, when you talk about this, the subdivision itself got handled, dumped into the uh. To the uh waste stream, but from there on, it backs up and it backs right into your folks' subdivision.
Yeah, the the and the difference that I, that we try to make here is that there's these regional issues, that if this gets plugged up, it affects not only unincorporated Weaver County. But everybody back the line.
That's absolutely true.
Whereas in my parents' case, if it gets plugged up, it affects the three houses around them, and it's a pain for them, but it's just the three houses around them, it's clearly not a countywide issue, it's a. That subdivision issue. So that's the unincorporated, would need to take care of that.
Well, and the example I would give them right now would be the railroad track, we just talked about, that's a good regional type project where. It's in the county under the railroad tracks, but the minute it comes out of the other side, it's in Riverdale. And above them, Washington Terrace.
Yeah, exactly.
So I don't wanna bring up the whole, I don't know that we wanna go down the whole special service district for stormwater, now, I mean, that may be a great idea, but that's, I think, beyond the.
Oh, no, that's another day.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's another day.
Oh, no, I agree with that.
So my plan is just.
Just for clarity, I think that's what I raised out, is that there's been two major discussions, flood control as well as unincorporated, unincorporated's been discussed more. In over the last ten years, maybe.
Well, you know, legally, I would love to get an opinion on this. On uh. Spending uh general. General.
General fund dollars?
Dollars. For some of this, because uh it does affect the general welfare of the county as water goes through it. Now, so much of this ends up. In municipal services, but it's wrong for municipal services to have to pay. For all of the general welfare, and it's everybody's water that comes along.
Well, and that's what we've done, we base, so we do have an opinion on that from the attorneys, and it basically says that if it's a regional issue that, like, if it backs up, and it would affect all the different cities. Then that is a countywide infrastructure, just like Twelfth Streets and Countywide Road, even though we're working on the unincorporated area. But the areas like my parents' house, that it floods and it gets those six houses, that's it, that's not a general.
They said the the divi- dividing point is if it's a regional, if it affects more of the district than this.
Yeah, it's a regional issue, and we.
Okay.
Kinda like the.
And I can deal with that, so the the pond, the horseshoe pond that we're having a big discussion about.
Part of this.
That's part of that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, actually, that's great.
But there are a lot of items.
I thought, that's how I thought about it.
There's a lot of items on the list I didn't include here, that just are unincorporated areas, and so they don't count.
Got it.
But these, we think that we can defend all of these as being regional.
Other projects, you you could put in there, uh, what do we call that? Our slang is the horseshoe pond.
Oh, it's a, did we not put that on there? Western drain.
Alright.
We could put the horseshoe pond in there.
We just didn't wanna commit anybody, we, so the concern about this too is we don't want CDC saying, oh, great, now that's my money.
Yeah.
Go out and.
Understand, understand, well, let's leave it western drain, and I'll just remember it to me.
No, this is a nice cross section, the only thing that's really, you've got everything within the county here, I think it's good.
I've raised that western drain by another million dollars. Because we're probably gonna have to purchase something there, I'd think, I'd make that five point three.
Um, I can do that, I got these numbers from Ashley, so I just relied on him.
Yeah, well, that's one that I think.
That I think that's fine.
There might need to be a a purchase of uh.
Yeah.
Some ground, it looks like, and if that's the case, I will raise that.
Yeah, I'm fine, put that to five.
That puts you over twenty, that's a good number.
Okay, I'll change that to five.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so. Will you also make sure when you go over there, have a discussion with Ricky Hatch and Craig Brandt? The clock needs to be in place, it needs to be operated by the clerk, if you would please.
Okay.
And I need, what needs to be where I can see it. And then the people can see it right there.
But Commissioner, Mister Chair.
Yeah.
I think this is gonna be a low pressure public hearing.
I do.
I don't view this as a high pressure.
I just wanna make sure, just in case, it's always good to be prepared.
That's true.
Yep.
That's true.
I learned that when I was eight.
That's good.
I went weekly to a little meeting. Cut his gap, cut his gap.
The initial projections for that August meeting were that nobody would show. So I would rather just be a little extra prepared and not use it, kinda like we were with the municipal services tax increase. I was happy that we were there prepared, even though not many people showed up.
Well, I agree with that.
Yeah. Okay, so I will make sure that Ricky's up at the clock, it's like three minutes per person.
Please.
And that we let him speak as many as wanna speak.
Uh, not yet, I'm gonna have a conversation with Chris Crockett, and it might be that I say we're gonna have so many speak for and so many speak against.
Okay.
Well, normally though, on these, what you do, you have them speak ahead and say, please, don't cover the same thing.
I'll say that.
Try to get something else. But you don't have people speak for and against on a tax increase traditionally.
Well, and there is a statute that says that we can't artificially limit the number or the amount of comments. Like, so you couldn't just say, well, I'm gonna have one for and one against, and since nobody was for them, we're done with the public hearing.
Yeah, I get it, no, it's not, well, I don't like, it just depends on how many's there, if there's six hundred there, I I can't go till eleven o'clock, they want me conscious.
Well, there won't be six hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sector won't be two hundred. I'll be surprised if they're safe.
Do you have any other questions or thoughts, I'll make those two changes, um, and I'll remind Ricky about the clock, and we'll go from there.
Great.
And then I'm gonna work with that on this first issue, and then we'll work with Shillings, just to get them to show you how these kids fall, so they're.
Thank you.
So you're aware, after your COVID meeting, they have scheduled Sunrise Engineering to give a quick presentation.
Great.
For tonight.
Happy stinking day, so. That'll determine whether or not I'm gonna go up there.
When's he gonna do that?
Three thirty is when they've scheduled it, but after your.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Scott. Hey, Ricky.
Hi.
How you doing, bud?
I'm doing alright. Hear me?
Yeah, we can hear, I can even see you, we uh, we were just talking about you, and it was all good. Well, we did, we just wanted to make sure you're you're recovering okay.
Yeah, I'm doing okay, I'm, I haven't gotten my tests back yet, so I don't know if it's the Rona or not.
Oh, alright. Alright, bud, wish you well.
Alright, and I've listened in to both this and the purchasing one, so thank you.
Okay, thanks. Brian Callen would like to have you proceed with our report with regards to the. Uh, u- update, please, go ahead.
Thanks, Commissioner, happy, happy to be here and share some time with you. Um, real quick, I can't, if I can, I wanna try and share this screen, can you see that graph?
Yes. But we are able to see it, and I think those online can as well.
Alright, um, what this is, is a three day average graph, I think I've shown it a few times over the last year and a half, as we've talked about our case numbers. Um, as you look at this, just kind of real quickly, the orange colors represents uh. Growth of the disease, meaning we're we're adding additional cases every day. Um, the yellow color is a plateau, uh, fits in a range of plus or minus ten percent of the growth rate, and the blue color. Is a decline uh in case numbers, uh, and that's, I just wanted to show it to you real quick. Uh, I think that's kind of our good news for today, is we're still in a stage of decline, so for about a three week. Timeframe now, we've started plateau with our cases and and see a reduction, and that trend is still continuing. Um, as we get to our case numbers, we are up to forty seven thousand three hundred and thirty six total uh COVID cases now, since the beginning of the pandemic. That's an increase of nine hundred and one from what I reported to you last week, but. A decrease uh in in the number of new cases by seventy two compared to the last week, so that, again, that's our. Decline in case rate. Um, our seven day average is down to one hundred and twenty two new cases a day, which is uh thirteen. Per day less than what I reported to you last week, so again. Um, an indication of a decrease in the number of active cases that we have in our area. Total active cases, three thousand and twenty three, which is a decrease of one hundred and twenty six from what we reported last week. So a good, good trend for us to be on, uh, and hopefully we stay along that trend. As we look at the number of uh COVID related deaths that we've had in our health district, we're up to a total of three hundred and twenty seven now. That's an increase of five from last week, one of those is a Morgan County resident, four of those are Weaver County residents over the last week. Our hospital situation is staying pretty consistent, um, and we expect that as we. Uh, usually two to three week delay in seeing an impact to our hospitals as our case rates change. Uh, we're reporting thirty six out of thirty ICU beds being utilized, so a hundred and twenty percent occupancy. Three hundred and thirteen out of four hundred and fifty five other hospital beds being used right now, so sixty nine percent of occupancy. Um, of those seventy nine hospital uh cases, hospitalizations are COVID cases. Uh, and twenty five of those ICU cases are COVID related. Um. We are operating at about. Uh, eighty three percent of our hospitalizations being unvaccinated people. And sixteen percent of our hospitalizations being in the vaccinated population. Uh, for a total of three thousand two hundred and fifty three uh breakthrough. Uh, COVID cases now, that three hu- three thousand two hundred and fifty three, that's COVID cases, not uh. Not hospitalizations, six hundred and, or one hundred and thirty six is the hospitalizations of those breakthroughs. So another way to kind of look at the impact that vaccinations are having uh in our community and the protective factor. Um, rather than focusing on the fact that we're having breakthrough cases, because we know we we're we're going to have those, the vaccine nations are. One hundred percent effective. Um, when we look at the impact that of the vaccinated community. And we look at the total number of cases, right now, the breakthrough cases are still. At two percent of the total vaccinated population, so in our, in our community, we have. A hundred and forty three thousand people that are fully vaccinated, only two percent of that. Is our breakthrough cases, and if we look at, narrow it down a little bit further. To hospitalizations, it's the the percentage is point zero zero one percent. Of the total vaccinated population is is being hospitalized as a breakthrough case. And if we look at the deaths, it, the percentage is point zero 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 two percent. Of the vaccinated population having a breakthrough case, being hospitalized and then and then dying, so. Uh, still, I I think our statistics demonstrate a very, and that's just the Weaver Morgan experience, uh, but still demonstrate. Uh, you know, a real benefit to people being vaccinated and reducing the overall risk of the disease. That they may have to themselves, so we're we're still continuing to. Uh. Offer vaccinations to the community and administer those uh as quickly as we can to to improve that situation for. For our our area.
Well, that's a good number, Brian.
Thanks, Commissioner, uh, let's switch to schools now, real quick, um. School cases have also declined just a little bit over the last couple of weeks. We have two hundred and fifty active cases in our schools right now, that's a decrease of forty six from last week. Um, two hundred and nine of those are in students, sixteen of those are in stu- in teachers, twenty five of those are in other school associated staff. Um. It, we have a positive case in eighty seven of our ninety one schools. But we don't have any schools that have reached the two percent test to say threshold. Uh, and we have one high school that's right at their one percent threshold. So again, I I'm gonna echo that, I think the efforts of the school districts working with our staff here at the health department. Um, and the cooperation of the parents of those students, when uh, when we ask them to. Quarantine or isolate a positive case, their cooperation has helped us manage the situation in the schools. And avoid any school closures up to this point. Um, so I I we're really happy with the effort that's happened um in 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 in. In our schools and keeping the schools open, we currently have one thousand six hundred and twenty six students that we've asked to quarantine, that's. That's students that have uh had an exposure to a positive case, and that's consistent with what we reported last week, within within ten percent. So kind of staying uh kind of steady on that number. Let me switch now to vaccinations, um. And and share with you uh our vaccine uptake with our fit five to eleven year olds, that's uh. The one that we're vaccinating the most, most, over the last week, we've had an eighty five percent uh. Growth rate of vaccination uptake in that population, uh, to being able to. Administer at least one vaccination dose to thirteen percent of our five to eleven year olds, um, so we're happy about that progress. Uh, and the uptake that we're seeing there, we're also seeing about one percent growth still in the twelve to eighteen year olds. And the nineteen to twenty nine year olds, uh, so we appreciate that growth there. As we look at the percentage of each of those uh demographics that pop uh. Receiving at least one vote back, dose of the vaccination, uh, the five to eleven year olds, we've hit thirteen percent. The twelve to eighteen year olds were at fifty nine percent. The nineteen to twenty year old, twenty nine year olds, and the thirty to thirty nine year olds, that we've gotten them up to sixty two percent. As we start putting all those numbers together. Um. As we look at eligible population in Weaver Morgan, we've we've hit sixty four percent of our eligible population, having received at least one vaccination. Um. If we look at the total population now, that total population would include. Uh, up to four year old now, uh, because zero to four can't be vaccinated, we're at fifty. Nine percent of that of our population being vaccinated, so. Uh, we're we're happy with that growth and continue to offer uh the vaccination clinics to the parents with the schools and and make sure that those. We get the uptake we'd like to see, um, and I think that's really what uh. What I have prepared for you in a report today, is there any questions I can answer?
That's a great report, Brian, thank you, no, I'm I'm okay with it, did a great job. Please pass on, please pass on for you, Brian, our gratitude to. Not just to you, but your staff, they're doing a wonderful job through this. Uh we hope that with the holidays coming.
You gotta comment and chat is.
We're, we're not taking comments.
I know, but just look at, see what it is, if there's a question asked or something.
Okay.
Hold on just a second, Brian.
Okay, commissions.
Oh man, blankets. Oh, that's what was being washed.
Yeah.
In the washing.
Like we, yeah, house for the cats.
You bet.
Uh, okay. Uh Brian, yeah, so we appreciate that very much. What, just to, again, extend our gratitude, please, to the, your staff. And you, you guys are doing a good job. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. I'll pass the information along.
See you, Brian.
Thank you.
Have a happy holiday.
Thank you. Gonna get an update today. Uh so let's continue. Christie, if you'd go ahead and send our guests in. Or let him in.
What's this on now?
Sunrise, isn't it? Oh, there, okay. Well.
Do you wanna pull the plug?
Candy, we didn't notice, so that's okay. It's just an update, not part of the extension.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, second, I'll in favor.
Bye.
We're gonna adjourn. Thanks, Mike.